Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Salome Springs Planning Commission. Could you join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Song. Montgomery.
Here.
Sally.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Smith. Bernard.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Commissioners, you've all received a copy of the October minutes. Were there any corrections? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Minutes are approved. So the first item on the agenda tonight is-
Vote.
I'm sorry.
Take a-
I'm sorry.
Uh, no, I may be wrong. I may be wrong.
Think you're right.
Oh, yeah, you're-
Do we vote on the- Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. The first item on the agenda tonight is Significant Development Permit, S.D. 2209. Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Megan Thomas, Planner One. This is a Significant Development Permit request to construct a two-hundred-and-eight-unit apartment complex on seventeen-point-twenty-seven acres. This project is located on the seven-hundred block of Highway four-twelve west on Lot Three of the Reserve Edition. On the screen is the site plan for the proposed multifamily complex. As you can see, we have two drives accessing North Simon Sager Avenue shown here. Additionally, they are proposing to construct a sidewalk along North Simon Sager Avenue that's shown here that will connect into the development both on the northeast side from here and on the southeast side from here. There are two proposed dumpster locations for this project, both located at the front entrances of the site, and both dumpsters will be screened. Those are shown here on the plans. There is also a proposed detention area located through here. As a condition of approval, the applicant will be required to file a drainage and utility easements via separate instrument. This is the landscape plan for the project. They will be providing a ten-foot landscape buffer with trees surrounding all sides of the site as well as interior landscaping throughout the development. These are the elevations for the proposed development. This is what the clubhouse located at the front of the site is intended to look like, and this is what the proposed apartment buildings will look like. And this is the overall site view of the property. It sits just north of Lowe's. You can see this is Lowe's here. And is primarily surrounded by agriculturally-zoned vacant land. Staff is recommending approval of this request with two needed conditions. The first condition is pertaining to the need to file drainage and utility easements via separate instrument as directed by the city engineer prior to certificate of occupancy issuance. The second condition is regarding the need to acquire an off-site drainage easement across the neighboring property to the north prior to building permit issuance. Staff is available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Is there anyone here from the community who has any questions or comments about this project? If there's no one, Commissioners, do you have questions or comments?
Megan.
I know you said there would be interior landscaping. Do we have any guidelines for that, or is it just whatever they want to do?
No, we do have guidelines for interior landscaping. Um, so they're required to have a certain amount of parking islands per parking spaces that they have, and so you can see that we have islands shown all throughout this development. I'll circle some for you right there. And each island is required to have a tree along with shrubs around there, and they have to have green space.
Any more questions? Megan, I have a question, and I think this is more of an RDOT issue, but I know that's gonna add a lot of increased traffic there on Simon Sager, and I think right now Simon Sager has a stop sign coming out onto four-twelve and also onto Talawka Street. Are we gonna change or apply to change anything regarding traffic control devices?
Um, so I'll go ahead and let our engineering speak to that since they did the traffic on the staff report.
Kevin Moore, City Engineer. Um, that's a good question. RDOT's stance in the past has been that these developments have to be built, and we have to have a measurable traffic impact before they'll evaluate something changing like a stoplight. So this would need to be approved and built, and if that does impact, uh, four-twelve like you're thinking, then we could apply for a warrant at that time. There's several conditions you have to meet in order to get a stoplight.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners? If not, do we have a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve Significant Development Permit, S.D. twenty-two-zero-nine with statements from the city.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Vote.
I'll call the votes.
There you go.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Alrighty, that will go to the board on December sixth. The second item is Significant Development Permit, S.D. twenty-two-ten. Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. To begin with this one, I would like to state that there was a last-minute edit to Condition Number Five on your staff report. This condition should state that the rezoning of Lot One to P.D. shall be required prior to the filing of the associated property line adjustment plat. This is a Significant Development Permit request to construct a hundred-and-thirty-two-unit apartment complex on fifteen-point-eight-eight gross acres. This project is located on the twenty-one-thousand block of Highway sixteen on revised Lot D of the Allen Highway sixteen addition. On the screen is the site plan for the proposed multifamily complex. As you can see, we have two proposed drives accessing East Quarter Road here. Additionally, they are proposing to construct a sidewalk along East Quarter Road as well as along Highway sixteen. You can see those sidewalks are shown here going around the development. This sidewalk will tie into the development right through here. This proposal will include private amenities such as a playground area and a dog park area. There are three proposed dumpster locations for this project, with two located over here to the south of the site and one shown at the frontage. Sanitation has approved these dumpster locations. As a condition of approval, all dumpsters will be required to be screened, and dumpster corral details will need to be included in the architectural plan set prior to building permit issuance. There is a proposed detention area located here in the northwest corner of the site. As a condition of approval, the applicant will be required to file drainage and utility easements via separate instrument. Due to a lot coverage issue, an associated property line adjustment is required of the applicant. This is the property line adjustment plat, which is currently under staff review. As you can see, the existing property line is being shifted to the south slightly. This is the existing line, and they're shifting it down here. This does address the lot coverage issue. However, as a condition of approval, the applicant will be required to rezone the small sliver of I-one to P.D. prior to filing of the associated property line adjustment plat, and that's based on this lot is I-one currently, and so moving that line down, this would remain I-one. So they will have to rezone this area here to I-one, or to I-one, to P.D., sorry. Okay, it should be noted that the Lot One acreage currently shown on this property line adjustment plat is the existing acreage for Lot One. The new gross acreage for the lot will be fifteen-point-eight-eight gross acres. This is the landscape plan for the project. They will be providing a ten-foot landscape buffer with trees surrounding all sides of the site as well as interior landscaping throughout the development. These are the elevations for the proposed apartment buildings. I'll let you guys take a look at those for a second. And these are the renderings looking west for the proposed development. And here are the renderings looking south. This is the overall site view of the property. You can see we have Foxtail, which is currently under construction just north of the site. Staff is recommending approval of this request with the following conditions. The first condition is the applicant shall file a lot line adjustment permit to adjust the southern property line per the attached plans prior to building permit issuance. This is needed to allow for the proposed site plan and property lines to match the existing property. Condition number two is the applicant must file drainage and utility easements via separate instrument as directed by the city engineer prior to certificate of occupancy. This is needed for the property drainage and easements. Condition number three, as previously stated, is the applicant shall provide final dumpster corral and signage details on the architectural plan set. This will be needed at the building permit stage for final code compliance review. Staff finds no reason why the issues cannot be addressed. Condition number four is the applicant must address the remaining Engineering Division comments on the plan set. Similar to the previous condition, this condition is to address some few, some final minor revisions needed as directed and reviewed by the city engineer. These will also be reflected on the architectural plan set. And the final condition is that the applicant shall rezone Lot One of the soft sixteen addition per Condition Number One above to P.D. planned development prior to the filing of the associated property line adjustment plat. Again, I would like to state that there has been a last-minute edit to Condition Number Five on your staff report. This condition should state that the rezoning of Lot One to P.D. shall be required prior to filing the associated property line adjustment plat. And staff is available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Anyone here from the community who would like to speak on this? No one. Commissioners, do you have questions or comments?
Megan. I know this is probably more for the engineer, and it's probably gonna be the same answer as four-twelve, but concerning Quarter Road, do we know where we are on that for the future? I know you said it would access Quarter Road, but there is no Quarter Road there right now. And that's a lot of cars to be accessing Highway sixteen when we've got Foxtail that's new there, we're getting ready to start the addition just south of the apartments there. We've got all the new housing additions out on Kenwood, that Kenwood and six-sixteen intersection. I know the traffic has to be there to do a study, so forth and so on. Is there anything we can do as far as stop signs or anything? It's-
I will let Kevin Moore, City Engineer, speak to that question, so just one second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kevin Moore, City Engineer. Um, you are correct, so we are, they will be extending Quarter Road. They're going to do a two-thirds street improvement across the north side of their property, uh, and that allows us to have them access Kenwood only at that existing drive that was built by Foxtail, so we're not adding any drives to Kenwood Street for the traffic concerns there. As far as sixteen and the sixteen spur are concerned, we don't really have any control over those roads as far as adding stop signs. But I will mention that sixteen is wide enough to accommodate the extra traffic. The main concern is always the light at four-twelve, and this is south of that sixteen spur, so a lot of traffic will likely go west on Kenwood Street rather than go all the way north to four-twelve and hit that light.
That's one of my concerns, is a lot of traffic there at Kenwood and sixteen.
Kevin?
Yes.
What are we doing to address the drainage concerns that we currently have on Quarter Road? Right there in that corner, it's standing water just about every time we get a one- or two-inch rain.
Are you speaking of Quarter Road that's-
Right there on the corner past the, uh, concrete batch plant and the-
Okay.
Processing facility, Salome Springs Processing.
Yes, uh, this site won't touch any of that, so all their drainage will-
Continue to cross-
Cross north.
On the north side of the property.
Yes, so it will actually cross north into the Foxtail subdivision and that regional basin there. It will not go west towards, uh, towards the batch plant and Waukesha Road.
What, Kevin, one more thing before you get out of there. Instead of hitting you soon. Hey, I know you probably can't give an exact, but it seems to me the Quarter Road connection is pretty critical to the traffic flow here. Um, what's your feeling on a timeline there? I know it says at a later date in here.
Right.
Um, any insight there?
All I can really say is it's not on our three-year plan, so I don't know if that will be added in the future, upcoming, but as of right now, it's not on our current capital improvements plan.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve S.D. twenty-two-dash-ten, Significant Development Permit, subject to the conditions as stated and as printed.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
I'll vote yes with the comment, um, that I feel like we need to address Quarter Road before three years. I think we're gonna have a traffic situation, and I feel like that is a necessary outlet, so, but I'll vote yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
I'm gonna vote no for that same reason. I'm, the Quarter Road issue, I think, needs to be addressed before we build that many apartments out there.
Hey, it passes. S.D. twenty-two-ten passes, and we'll go to the board on December the sixth. So the next item is gonna be Significant Development Permit, S.D. twenty-two-twelve. Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This is a rezoning request. The request is to rezone four-point-nine-nine acres located on the three-thousand block. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I told you, the Plasma Center. You want me to present that?
I think we're gonna-
That's the tabled one.
This is gonna be tabled, right?
Mm-hmm.
I apologize. Okay, so I think S.D. twenty-two-twelve, uh, the city would like to table that until the January tenth planning meeting, right? So do we have a motion on that?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion and a second.
McKinney.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes. Okay, that's tabled, and we will see it again January the tenth. So the next item on the agenda is rezoning development permit, RZ twenty-two-ten. Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a rezoning request. The request is to rezone four-point-nine-nine acres located at the three-thousand block of Highway four-twelve. They are requesting to rezone the property from R-four residential medium to C-two roadway commercial. The future land use map is calling for this area to be regional commercial. Therefore, the proposed C-two zoning is appropriate for what the intended land use for the property is. This is the overall site view of the property. You can see it sits just behind Tractor Supply. This is Tractor Supply right here. The property is currently vacant and is primarily surrounded by vacant commercial land. There is a residential abutting to the west. You can see it here in this image. As a future subdivision and a future subdivision plan, this is a Somerset subdivision planned here to the south of the site. It should be noted that the detention basin for the future Somerset subdivision will be abutting this site. There will not be any homes from the subdivision abutting it. Screening from the residential uses will be required for any future development of this property. Staff is recommending approval of this request with no needed conditions. Staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Is there anyone from the community who wants to speak on this? If not, Commissioners?
Megan. Sorry, I'm asking a lot tonight.
You're fine.
Um, I know there was a concern for Tractor Supply as far as the access there on the east side. Is, would that be the access for this property? Or is that area of grass space on the west side access for this property?
Though at that time, I really can't answer that question. When they come through for Significant Development, I think we can verify where we're gonna have the access coming from.
Do you have any idea?
Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner, is this one? Yep. Uh, they do have an access easement on that side of, uh, Tractor Supply, my understanding, so that's already been filed, and so that would be how the applicant would get access to their property. It's on the, uh, east side, I believe.
They already have the-
It's already existing, yeah. It's an existing access easement.
Anything else, Commissioners? If not, do we have a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve Significant Development Permit, S.D. twenty-two-dash-twelve with staff requirements. Twenty-two dash- Rezoning twenty-two-dash-ten, sorry.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hey, it passes. RZ twenty-two-ten will go to the board on December the sixth, twenty-twenty-two. So now we're gonna move to special use permits. The next item is Special Use Permit, S.U. twenty-two-zero-eight. Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This is a Special Use Permit request for a property located at two-oh-one North Dogwood Street. The request is to allow a single-family residence to be used as a short-term rental. You can see from the general area map on your screen that the property is currently zoned R-two residential medium. This is the applicant letter that staff has received for the special use request. The letter is essentially stating that the owner would like to utilize the property for the purpose of a short-term rental while they currently live out of state. Letter also gives a brief description of the applicant's intent and rules for the property while it is being used as a short-term rental. I'll let you guys take a look at that letter for a second. Are you good? Okay. This is the overall site view of the property. You can see the house is heavily shaded by trees. Therefore, we provided two different images so that you can get a better visual of this property. This property is zoned appropriately for the proposed special use and does have existing parking that meets the minimum residential parking requirements. Staff is recommending approval of this request with no needed conditions. Staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Is there anyone from the community who would like to speak on this? Yes, sir. If you could, come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
My name is Bruce Penny. I'm a resident at nine-oh-six West University Street. My property abuts this property. Um, I'm sorry, I'm not a public speaker. I haven't been to, ever been to a city government event, but I feel compelled to come. Uh, I disagree with this wholeheartedly. My neighbors and I are sitting there playing Monopoly, playing by the rules, and then a new person comes in, flips the board because they don't like the rules, and they wanna change the rules. By any other name, this is a, a short-term transient hotel. I don't care what you call it. We've seen all the, the horror stories on the internet. There's an Airbnb right across the street, authorized, and the neighbors I know live right next to it. They have issues regularly with the people that come through there. I'm not saying all people are gonna be that way. I don't know the Lees. I don't mean to disparage the Lees in anything I say, but, um, those people, uh, have intentions, maybe good intentions, but we all have good intentions. Those intentions change. I moved down here with good intentions, with a peaceful community where I would live with residents on a long-term basis. I know there's some long-term rentals in the area. That's fine. They're long-term. There's not people coming in and out subject to, uh, their own rules or, or haphazard rules because nobody's there to overwatch them. I'm gonna be there to call you, and I don't wanna have to do that, to call nine-one-one. I don't wanna have to do that. JBU is a red herring, throwing it out there saying, hey, we wanna be nice to JBU folks, and- JBU's been there for a hundred years. The people have found places to live. We don't need this in our neighborhood. It's a business. We don't need a business. You're opening the door if you approve this for a business to come in. How many more businesses are gonna be allowed to come in? They say short-term rental. How long a period are they gonna do this? Until we move down here. Their good intentions might change. Two years, three years, ten years, never changes. I'm sorry, but I, I have to speak up. I don't wanna be that poor neighbor if they finally move in and say, oh, he's the guy. But I gotta come in and say, it's the wrong thing to do. It's just not right. Appreciate your time. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. Is there anyone else from the community who wants to speak on that? Or is there a representative of the, of the property here that would like to speak? Sir, if you could, again, state your name and address for us, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Roy Biles. I live in Centerton, uh, but my brother-in-law is the one purchasing the, purchasing the property, and, uh, I'm available for any, any questions. Um, I, I will say this, they have deep roots to Arkansas and Northwest Arkansas. Um, entire family lives in Northwest Arkansas, uh, siblings do. Um, their plans are to move here within the next four years or so, five years, whatever it is, um, to retire. Um, they both, Lisa and Stuart, both graduated from John Brown. Um, Stuart's been pastoring churches in Arkansas and Northwest Arkansas for the last twenty years, and, uh, he's a church plant in Seattle right now, but he will be moving back in the next forty-five years.
Roy, can you state your address in Centerton?
Okay, it's seven-thirty Sienna Drive, seven-two-seven-one-nine.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who has comments? If not, Commissioners?
Megan. We've approved, uh, quite a few of these lately, um, and I know they, they kinda just run perpetually, right, as long as they're being used as such?
Um, I believe they have to have a business license and renew the business license for it to stay in effect. So it's not just like a never-ending approval. They have to keep up with renewing their business license for it.
Yeah, so assuming they're keeping up with their things, then it would exist without. Just wondering if there was a way that we could put a cap, like a timeline, on this. In this instance, it might be good practice to say, well, you've intended to move here in X amount of time, but I know that's, that's not the rule as written right now, so.
I will say that staff is working on an ordinance, um, to kind of just, to determine a cap on these Airbnbs, um, and so that will be coming in the future, but with how our code currently sits, they're permitted by special use.
Don't leave. I know I read the letter from the agencies that's going to be taking care of the property. Did, I, I don't have it right in front of me, but-
In Weekender Management, yeah.
Yes, Weekender Management. Did that say that they had contact information, everything that would be given to the neighbors for any issues that could arise? I know they can call the city if there's something immediate, but if there's any kind of problems, didn't that have information to contact them? Will that be given to all the neighbors?
That is a good question.
I mean, I understand your concern- I mean, I understand your concern, but I, I'm just wanting to make sure that, you know, there's something to help address that.
And Megan, they state that they will include in the house rules, quiet hours, no smoking, no pets, et cetera. And that they themselves will be using the property on occasion. If the neighbors see that some of these things are not happening, they would contact Weekender, right? Or would they contact the city?
They could contact Weekender, or they could contact the, the police on a noise ordinance.
But not on pets, that would be animal control.
Animal control, yes.
Megan. I guess we're looking at the rule, but I'm just wondering what teeth or recourse or just, what do we have in the ability to revoke this? Let's just say, if it's not used as intended and we receive complaints, I mean, do we have that authority?
To revoke your approval of the special use?
Remove special use allocation.
If they keep up with their business license, then I, I don't think you would.
Have to keep it out there.
They would have to keep up with the renewals on the business license in order for this to stay active. If they fail to renew the business license, their approval essentially will, will go away. And they'll have to come back through for another approval.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may add to that. You spoke of the business license, so, you know, if there are a series of violations, of continuing problems, you know, we, the city could look at revoking the business licenses. And despite having this approval, they would not be able to operate if the license was revoked. And so that would be our, our remedy if there are a series of problems.
But Mr. Williams, if I could ask, that would be a series of violations against city ordinance or a series of violations against the statute? Not a violation of the rules set forth by the renter, correct? So if the renter has a, a policy that you have no pets and they bring a pet, it's not against city ordinance to have a pet, correct?
That, that's correct, so, no, so the, the private rules, we, we can't enforce those. That would be up to the management company and the owners. But if, say, the dogs are aggressive or, you know, running loose, things like that, you know, or, you know, there are noise violations. Yes, so violations of, of city code, if those were to continue, could, pardon me, could provide a basis for revoking the business license.
Thank you, Jay, thank you, okay. Commissioners, any, any other questions? Mr. Penny, we, we'll give you a quick moment if you. Yes, sir, very quick, if we could, we gave you.
Bruce Penny, again, just a couple of follow-up questions. If the ordinance to cap is approved, can you go back retroactively, retroactively or grandfather the people that are already around town? And the local, well, contact, y'all mentioned the contact. I would hope that person would be local or that business would be local that we could contact them so that they would be reactive to our concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Penny. How would that work as far as grandfathering, Jay?
If I understand the question, it's if a cap was placed on the number of, of these types of businesses that could be in town. You know, could we go back and retroactively, you know, revoke some of these permissions? And the answer to that would be, would be no. It would, any that are in place at the time the cap would be passed, you know, would be able to continue as long as they met the rules and, and kept up their licenses and so forth. So, no, it would, it would be a cap potential on future businesses opening up of this type, but not on the, the past.
Thank you again.
And Megan, there is a letter that we have in our packet that Mr. Penny probably does not have, where they responded to questions about this. And they said that if a bad guest was there, they do have someone on call that can be contacted. So I don't know if we can make this available to any who have questions about it, but it was included as an answer in our packet.
And it also said they have an employee that lives in Salem Springs.
It's very specific to every single one of those.
So is that the same letter that's on your screen?
No.
That was his reply to Mr. Steve Thomas's letter.
Steve Thomas, and so his reply at the very back says, "To prepare for the unlikely scenario that a bad guest slips through the cracks and creates a disturbance." Prior to this, they said they screened the guest, but you know, you can, you never know. "Weekender will make their contact information available to all neighboring parties. They will have someone on standby twenty-four-seven to address these concerns. It's very important to us to be good neighbors and it is essential for the success of our vacation rental for us to maintain pristine property." So I feel that they did try, strive to answer some of the questions, maybe that could be shared.
If, if we receive a FOIA request requesting that information, we can always share it with them, but it's not something that we'll publicly just send out.
Exactly, but they could request.
They could request it.
It is available on the city website at the agenda.
Thank you, Megan. Commissioners, any more comments or questions?
I guess my comment, I, I feel like we've set a precedent at this point in doing this for several other people. But I, I do have some pause when I hear several members of the local community that, that do have concerns. And nothing to do with whom is doing the project. So in my mind, I feel like we've addressed several of these issues. And I, I think the applicant has directly spoken to some of these in, in their letter. That's all I have, my comment.
That all, commissioners? Okay, so do we have a motion for special use permit SU twenty-two oh eight?
I'll make a motion to approve SU twenty-two oh eight special use development permit.
Of a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second.
Williams?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
A special use twenty-two oh eight passes and will go to the board on December the sixth. So the sixth item on the agenda tonight is special use permit SU twenty-two oh nine, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This is another special use request for a property located at four twenty-six South Washington Street. The request is to allow a single-family residence to be used as a short-term rental. You can see from the general area map on your screen that the property is currently zoned R2 residential medium with an H1 overlay. This is the applicant's letter that staff has received for this special permit request. The letter essentially is stating that the owner would like to utilize the property for the purpose of a short-term rental while they currently live out of state. This letter is also giving a brief description of the applicant's intent and rules of the property while it is used as a short-term rental. And this is the overall site view of the property. This property is zoned appropriately for the proposed special use and does have existing parking that meets the minimum residential parking requirements. It should be noted that there is an existing long-term rental located in the rear of the property. However, this long-term rental will not be included in the special use permit request. Staff is recommending approval of this request with no needed conditions, and staff is available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this? If not, commissioners, does anyone have comments or questions?
Well, I just have a comment. I live very close to this property and it was in a lot of disrepair. And if you drive up South Washington, I always try to drive and look at where things are, but I didn't have to this time. They're doing a lot of remodeling and upgrading this property. And there are a couple of really bad rentals around it, and, and just to the other side of it is one that is in bad shape. Every time someone comes in and does significant updating to a property, I feel like they are making a financial effort to provide and take care of that property. Because the last thing they want is to have the money they've invested be destroyed by improper rentals to short-term. So I just wanted to say that I think this is a good thing in this particular case. And I do believe anyone who buys a property here and decides to rent it out has the best intentions of monitoring their guest, whether they're staying a year or two days.
Anyone else, commissioners?
Just a comment. I know I talked about notifying the neighbors of management companies and such. I, I don't know if maybe in the future that can be worked into something where, like this says it's managed by OZ B and B. This particular letter doesn't have any contact information in it. But as a rule of thumb, if we could have something written in, eventually, I think it'd be great if all neighboring houses or anyone there was notified of that so that if there was a problem, they know exactly who to contact. And maybe they aren't contacting the police department or something for something minor.
And a comment, I did get a letter as a neighbor, and the person who signed it was this management company and it was Todd Varnado. So the neighbors got something now. They didn't, whatever that, whatever the notice of this meeting was that went out to all of the neighbors around, didn't get in the packet, obviously. But we were notified of who would be managing it.
Is there any follow-ups sent after it's approved? Like, okay, I know there's legal notices that go out before, but anything after? Like after we approve it? Hey, this passed, or anything like that?
Um, we, the applicants typically reach out to us and say, did this get approved? And then we'll tell them the next step of the process if it has been approved. Oh, for the neighbors? No.
Did you say something about the auxiliary dwelling unit? That it wasn't included in this?
Yes, that long-term rental that's in the rear of the property is not included in this request.
That's not what they're building, that's owned by somebody else.
Any other comments or questions, commissioners?
If there are none, I'd make a motion to approve. SU twenty-two dash oh nine?
Second.
A motion and a second.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hey, SU twenty-two oh nine passes and will go to the board on December sixth. Next item on the agenda is special use permit SU twenty-two ten, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This is another special use permit request for a property located at twenty-two thirteen East Fenix Street. The request is to allow a single-family residence to be used as a short-term rental. You can see from the general area map on your screen that the property is currently zoned R2 residential medium. This is the applicant's letter that staff has received for this special use request. The letter is essentially stating that the owner would like to utilize the property for the purpose of a short-term rental while they live out of state. However, they do intend to use it for personal use once a month when they come to visit. The letter also gives a brief description of the applicant's intent and rules for the property while it is used as a short-term rental. And this is the overall site view of the property. The property is zoned appropriately for the proposed special use and does have existing parking that meets the minimum residential requirements. This is part of the Foxtel subdivision that is currently under construction. You can see we have some houses still under construction over here. I was recommending approval of this request with no needed conditions, and staff is available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this? If not, commissioners, do you have comments or questions?
I've been making too many comments, but I'm, I'm going to go ahead and end out the evening that way. There, I see there where that water is directly behind that road, there, that is detention or retention pond, I don't remember which. If it's rented out, is there going to be, is that one of those areas we're going to fence that the city Board of Directors approved fencing? Because I could see with people renting it, maybe having small children, that it could become a concern. It is already fenced and I can't see it.
Yeah, it looks like there's an existing fence shown.
Okay, good, thanks.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? If not, do we have a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve significant use of development twenty-two dash ten.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Special use permit SU twenty-two eleven passes, or I apologize, twenty-two ten passes and will go to the board on December the sixth. So next is special use permit SU twenty-two eleven, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This is another special use request for a property located at five-ten South College Street. The request is to allow a single-family residence to be used as a short-term rental. You can see from the general area map on your screen that the property is currently zoned residential medium with an H1 overlay. This is the applicant's letter that staff has received for this special use request. The letter is essentially stating that the owner would like to utilize the property for the purpose of a short-term rental. The letter also gives a brief description of the applicant's intent and rules of the rental property. And this is the overall site view of the property. You can see the house is heavily shaded by trees, so it is a bit hard to see the overall sight. But this is the little blue house that we're talking about here. They also have a little shed over here that's really shaded by trees. This property is zoned appropriately for the proposed special use and does have existing parking that meets the minimum requirements for residential parking. Staff is recommending approval of this request with no needed conditions, and staff is available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Megan. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am, you can approach, if you would, your, your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, my name is Catherine West and I live at two-ten West Granite Street. My property runs adjacent to this property. The proposal, our concerns is more for safety issues. This is a long-established homeowner neighborhood with small children that use this general location as a area to play and ride bicycles. Additionally, I have a sixteen-year-old daughter. So the concern is the screening processes for short-term rentals is about the same as hotels. You really do not know who you're bringing in and whether or not these individuals are criminals, pedophiles. So that's my concern. What recourse is do myself and my neighbors have if an individual does rent this home out and does damage? Poison's our animals, targets our children. So those are concerns. And then what happens later on if the short-term rental does not work out and they decide to turn it into a long-term rental? And we end up getting saddled with individuals that don't care about the existing property or the property of belonging to other people. That was a situation that occurred prior to my even relocating to Salem Springs. There was a family in that location on the opposite side of my home that result, resulted in a partial security fence being built between my property and that property. Those individuals destroyed the inside of that house, and it's my understanding from two of my previous neighbors that when they cleared that house out, there was enough garbage inside equal in mass to the existing structure. And there were reoccurring problems after those tenants were evicted. With them coming through the neighborhood at odd hours of the day looking for work. Our neighbors who currently live in that existing home, they had their dog stolen, only for this family to end up. only for this family to end up with a dog that looked just like it. And in three separate occasions that I am aware of, the family that lived in that home were suspected of breaking into cars in the neighborhoods my car was broken into and they were on, were on camera, ring, the ring door, doorbells, breaking into my daughter's neighbor's house in the subdivision next to the revenue office. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the community or the property owner that would like to speak, please? Ma'am, if you could state your, your name and address for us, please, and you have three minutes.
Lisa Ristler, 3024 South Elm. My husband and I are the property owners. We already have some Airbnb, we have an Airbnb in Oklahoma. And so we're very strict. We had some issues with the one in Oklahoma, so when we do, we go through only Airbnb. And we make sure, we always make sure that we accept people that we are okay with. I mean, they have to have visited a lot of sites. We do not just let anybody in there. And a lot of times, we actually rent to pastors or we rent to missionaries that are in for a week or so. So we try to keep it Christian-based and as much as possible. And I appreciate that the citizens around them have concerns because I would be concerned as well. I don't want somebody in my neighborhood that's going to hurt my child. I have a five-year-old. And so we do make sure we, they have stayed in a lot of places and we can track and see it's not worth the money to me if I think that something's going to happen to our neighbors. And we also have long-term rentals. And we have more success with the short-term rentals than we do the long-term rentals. We have people come in and tear our property up and you try to do background checks, but you always end up with somebody that you, you don't know how, you know? But with the Airbnb and me being able to verify how many other stays that they've had before I accept them into our home, I think it has a much higher success rate. And so, and we do take our time and we don't just accept anybody, so. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience who'd like to speak? If not, commissioners, do you have comments?
Lisa?
I know you mentioned Airbnb. Do you rent through Airbnb or do you guys manage?
So we rent through Airbnb so we can track them if we don't know them. Now, if a pastor comes in or a singing group, a Christian singing group or missionary comes in, we'll rent it through the local churches. And so that's the only time we manage it. Otherwise, it's through Airbnb. And like I said, I make sure they have a history of renting. I don't just accept them if they've had one or two rentals. They've had to have a lot of reviews before I accept them.
So would a neighbor know who to contact if there was a problem?
I think that's a great idea. I was listening to the gentleman earlier and I think that's a great idea to, to have the neighbors know who to contact. And we are local. We're not very far from there. And so I, I don't see a problem with us sending a letter if this gets approved and saying, hey, this is our contact. It was approved. We, we know we have, it has to go to the board. But send a letter and saying, hey, here's our contact information. We want it to be a safe neighborhood. It is a great neighborhood. We take our daughter over there all the time to play, so, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks.
Comments or questions, commissioners?
I guess my only comment is, you know, I, I feel like, you know, John and Lisa, you guys have contributed significant resources to this project and shown your commitment to the community in that regard, which I think gives me a comfort level. Your existing property management experience and commitment to provide contact information locally and be here is, is helpful to me. So thank you for sharing that.
Anyone else? If not, do we have a motion on SU 2211?
Make a motion to approve SU 2211 special use development permit.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
McKinney?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Hey, SU 2211 passes and will go to the board on December the 6th. That completes all of our actionable items, I think. So now we're moving to board-approved permits and staff-approved permits. Megan?
Do you want me to present those? I was actually coming up here to say something else.
Oh, go ahead, Megan.
Oh, I just wanted to put it out there on public record that we won't be having a planning commission meeting for December, just so everyone is aware of that. But I can present those if you would like me to.
Commissioners, does anyone have questions on any of the board-approved or staff-approved permits? No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
If not, do we have a, a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.